I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for August 19th, 2024. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath, present. Commissioner Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present. At this time, we will have public comment for items on the agenda. We will start inside the city chambers first, and just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and place of residence. After we have exhausted all public comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment inside the chambers, we will now open it up to Zoom participants for items on the agenda. Hearing no public comment, we will now begin our work-study session, so I will hand it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, you received, and I apologize for not getting it to you until the weekend, but in your email this weekend. And if anybody doesn't have it, please let me know. I got printed copies here for you that are in color, red line. But proposed markup of a vacant buildings ordinance that we talked about adding some teeth to last time. I can just kind of walk through the markups if that works, and then I turn it over to you for your discussion. On the first page, in section 10-401, I took out the word licensed business. We don't license businesses. I don't have a business license ordinance, so that didn't mean anything. In 10-402, these were conditions that were recited as evidence of a property being vacant, but it didn't seem to mean anything if it was present. And so I changed it to read de facto vacant property, so there's presumption in if these factors exist, that a property is vacant and therefore must be registered. And paused it to read that way. The only other change I made to that section was to reference the current International Property Maintenance Code, where we actually adopt the Property Maintenance Code. We adopt the current version, and some of our older ordinances weren't updated to reflect that, this being one of them. So I made that correction. In 10-403, again, we don't have an inspection department. We have a community development department. Just clarifying that not only is registration due, but the fee is due at that time as well. And the language, which we could move all this into a different section on administration, but it was done this way when it was originally drafted, so I left it this way. That, you know, talking about the late fee and that it represents a special assessment if it's not paid, or it'll be reduced to a special assessment if it's not paid timely. 10-404, added a requirement for an email address. That's how we typically communicate anymore. And added a timeframe for allowing, or the amount of notice we needed to give, which would presumably then be by email for entry onto a vacant property when that was necessary. And added information requirements related to utility accounts. Just clarifying that need to know in whose name those accounts are. Registration fee, just clarifying that that fee will be set by the city commission in 10-405. 10-406, put a timeframe in there for the inspection. Again, clarifying that the fee is set by the commission. And the failure to schedule that or allow the inspection, as the case may be, is a civil infraction. And then further, that when we do that inspection, we will order any repairs that are needed to the structure as a result of that inspection. That's 10-406. 10-407, I did not revise. 10-408 was the section on required maintenance. This was kind of disorganized, the last thing in this section was compliance with the Property Maintenance Code. That's the basic thing that any property has to do, and so we made that number one. And then I changed the rest of it to, in addition to, and these are really just clarifying things for the most part, because for the most part, these are also things that would be in the Property Maintenance Code, but I didn't want to wholesale delete the section from the ordinance. And I think there are a couple of things in there, like overgrown and dead vegetation, which would be in addition to the Property Maintenance Code requirements. That's 10-408. 10-409, just some clarifying language there. 10-410, that sentence didn't seem to make sense to me. So I deleted it, the final section about declaring it to be vacant. If it wasn't vacant, the ordinance wouldn't apply in the first place. 10-411, reuse and reoccupancy. It's clarifying the requirements for getting a new certificate of occupancy after a property has been declared vacant. It will still include the Property Maintenance Code, but there could be provisions of the Michigan Building Code and the related construction codes that would come into play in that circumstance if the CO has expired, certificate of occupancy has expired. Responsibility for violations, that was just some clarifying language and reinforcing the idea that it's a lien. Then probably the biggest thing that has changed is in 10-413, which is what we talked about last time, and the idea of a periodic inspection. So the idea here is that the inspections will be both exterior and interior as it relates to monitoring, once a year for the first three years. And then if a property is still vacant after three years, once every six months. The idea being that deterioration accelerates the longer a building is vacant, and so the more frequent inspections become necessary at that point. Right to appeal, there was this body that was supposed to have been appointed by the city administrators over time, which I don't know that it ever was, but we have a body that is for purposes of hearing appeals like this, and that's the Construction Board of Appeals. And so I changed the appeal reference to the Construction Board of Appeals in 10-414 and put a timeframe on seeking that relief. And I did not change anything else in the ordinance. So with that, I would open it up for your discussion. In 10-403, it says properties wherein the owner spends a portion of the year residing at another address. Those are exactly right. So if I leave and go live in Florida for five months or someplace south, I don't have any, this doesn't affect that? Correct, that's correct. Thank you.
And how many days is it when a property becomes vacant that this triggers?
I believe it says 60. There is, however, though, in the fee language, a waiver of the fees in certain cases, one-time waiver initially in that initial circumstance, where one of these circumstances in 10-415 apply. A, that it's in the process of being demoed or rehabbed. Two, that the length of time for demo or rehab relates to the length of time. And then three, that the property is being actively marketed. So in those circumstances, you would have, the ordinance would apply, but you would not have to pay the registration fee for one year if any of those circumstances applied. And so, you know, you brought up the example last time, I think Commissioner Banky of, you know, somebody who inherits property. And so, as the ordinance reads right now, it would apply, but you would not have to pay the fees because you would presumably be in that first year where you're trying to actively market the property.
And the inspection would take place after the first year or after the 60 days?
After the 60 days.
Okay, so if it's actively being sold.
As it reads right now, you would still inspect it, but there would be no fee.
Okay, so inspected but no fee, and so then you would inspect the inside of the house as well?
Yes.
Okay.
That is true today. The initial inspection is supposed to be inside and outside.
Okay, so someone could be, have a house for sale. They come to the city for an inspection under point of sale, and they get their list of items that they need to correct on the exterior of their house. They are hoping the house sells, doesn't sell within 60 days, and the city has to come in, do the inspection. And because they didn't sell the house within 60 days, now there's a list of things they need to correct from inside the house potentially before they can sell it too?
As the, again, that's not a change to the language as it exists, but that is a technical reading of the language as it exists right now. And so that might be, you know, I mean, you all should discuss whether that's the way you actually want it to work. In practice, I don't think we're doing that. You know, so we should talk through whether that's something we really want to be doing.
In practice, what's the, is there a followed belief that the community development department does to work with people? That, you know, I heard Commissioner Castleberry talk about having a plan. So if there's this plan to sell the house and it's actively being sold, are we more likely to work through that process to, you know, let 60 days become 90 days? As compared to, you know, I think the concern that everyone has, that four years, five years, six years?
Yeah, I think effectively right now, and I'd have to talk to the code enforcement officers to make sure this is true, but I'm pretty sure that as, right now, if you demonstrate that, you know, the house is for sale, yeah, during that first year, nothing happens.
And how would that read in language? If that were to be incorporated?
Being, you know, we would add that language to the initial inspection paragraph if that was your desires to. Essentially, and again, as you point out, this would work hand in glove with quite a sale ordinance. So I think a discussion you might have is whether or not, you know, as long as you've had that initial, that point, as long as you've had a point of sale inspection and the house sells within a year, then the rest of this wouldn't kick in.
I would feel much better with that, at least in maybe not even a year, six months maybe.
Good.
And then the other question I had, so in some instances, you are specific where it says a $50 late fee, but then other areas, it says the fee for registration shall be set by the resolution of the city commission. And so are all of our ordinances, late fees, $50? And if we change that, do we need to change every ordinance? Should that?
We probably, I, you know, I was going with the structure of what we had, but I think in cleaning this up, what we should do is take out all references to fees and leave those for the fee resolution, as opposed to try to state in the ordinance what the fee is.
I would agree with that. So instead of putting in a $50 or $150, just leave it as the fee as set. Then we don't have to go in and ever change it. It's just whatever is set by the commissioner.
Right.
And then just last question, under 10-404, I brought this one up before, paragraph three, care and control of the property. So definition of care and control, someone that lives within 30 miles, is that someone that can open the door for an inspection or someone that needs to do work and owns it?
My understanding of it would be somebody who has keys and can get into the property. Okay, we could clarify that as well. Thought it was appropriate.
Just as long as, I mean, as long as that's the common understanding, a definition of care and control, I'm fine with that.
So Kelly, last time you mentioned having a plan of action for those that are, that are still vacant. Did I miss it, or is?
I didn't, I don't see it in here.
What were you thinking? What did you think?
I agree with Commissioner Banky and you as well, Commissioner Roberts, that the late fees should be passed by resolution. And I had some concerns as well about properties where the owners are selling the property, whether it come through estate, whether it be their own property, et cetera. Letting it go, I would like to put a time limit on that so that we're checking to make sure that there's active sales happening or whatever, and it's just not staying vacant and under the guise of selling it.
Yeah, that would happen more probably for commercial properties, because this is, you know.
Yeah.
We're trying to deal with the commercial properties that are just sitting there.
And vacant homes, I know that we've had some citizens come and talk about homes in this community that are incredibly blighted and empty. And we've had dogs, you know, trapped in them, kids lighting fires in them. So some of them are homes as well. And if you're going to actively be selling that home, it should be a safe structure. So that causes some concern for me. But I, any other building, I mean, I think if it's a home and a dwelling that people can, that is, you know, sustainable, it would make sense that they're selling it. That's not that big of a deal. But if it's stripped down of all of the insides, you know, there's no electrical wiring, things like that, then someone buying that home or putting in that home as vacant, they need to have a, they need to have a plan of putting that back in, or it's going to be in the sale. I mean, so there's some logistics there, I think I would like to clarify about homes, I guess. But and then in commercial properties, you know, we're reviewing, we have a commercial property ordinance as well that I'd like to review soon and talk about. But I do believe that letting something stay empty for three years, and even if we're checking it every six months and there's no plan to recover, maintain that property, we can very quickly, that property can become a dangerous building. So I would like to see there a plan with this, within this action. A goal to sell it to.
Mr. Castleberry, is that something allowed? Like, are we allowed to require a plan of action for a building? Like, I don't know, drawing a blank on one that's empty at the very moment, that's been empty forever, chain and cable?
Well, I don't think you're, I don't think you're requiring it. What you're saying is if you have one that is approved, then you would not fall under the ordinance. So you're not necessarily requiring it. You're saying if you don't want to have your building inspected every six months and possibly be subject to the fine of the ordinance, then if you provide a plan, then the city would not do that. That's how I look at it. It's not that you're requiring it. It's an incentive. You give the plan, you don't get, and then you're not subject to this ordinance.
Okay, that's not how I.
That's not how.
I don't know if I would recommend going there. I mean, I think we do want to get in and, like I said, monitor the condition of the property that's been vacant that long. I'm not saying that you don't inspect it at all. What I'm saying is if, my understanding is you're saying if you have a plan, in other words, you're putting some of these buildings take a lot of time. I think the way I understood the suggestion is, no, not dissimilar to like what we do in planning. Right? When you submit a site plan, you have to have plans, you know, for certain things related to the project. A plan for stormwater handling, for example, whatever it might be. You know, that's a submittal requirement. Well, I mean, as I understood the suggestion, I think, you know, the idea would be that when you get to that monitoring phase, or at least at some stage, when you get to the monitoring phase, you must then also submit a plan for how you're going to reoccupy the, or cause the building to be reoccupied in order to be compliant.
And would the opposite maybe be true, like in the short phase? Submit the plan to, you know, waive the first year inspection. If, you know, here's my plan to sell it, I want to sell it, and this is what I'm working on, and don't inspect me for, you know, X amount of time. And yep, it's sold, don't have to worry about it.
So section 10-415, there is potential for waiver of fees. So if we're demonstrating that we're actually in the process of demolition rehabilitation or other substantial repair to a vacant building, there can be a waiver of that registration fee, correct? So without, I understand what Attorney Castleberry is saying now, that there is incentive for presenting a plan, right? We can waive fees. So if I bought a building downtown that's empty right now, and I, you know, I'm working to redo electricity or whatever, those things, there would be a waiver of fees because we're rehabbing an older building downtown. Is that?
All right, I see where you're looking at. So, so section one under 40415. So if we, so demonstrates with satisfactory proof that he or she is in the process of demolition, rehabilitation, or other substantial repair of the vacant building.
So I hire a contractor to rehab my building, or I'm doing it myself, whatever. Here's the plan, here's my, I'm not an electrician, so I would hire one. Here's the electrician, this is our tentative schedule, et cetera.
Maybe that, maybe we beef that section up a little bit that says, okay, this is one time, which it says one-time waiver. You know, like.
I would think also.
Stevenson's, you know, old big, old, old Bigsby, that's been sitting empty for how many years now? You know.
Very long time.
I would think also if someone is handing in a plan, that the time schedule, or at least a tentative idea, would be given along with that plan. Maybe not, maybe I'm way off base with that. But I would think that someone bringing in a plan of attack to rehab that building, to move that building along, I would think would have some sort of time schedule generated with it. Maybe not.
I think the pickle we're in is massive in commercial industrial blight. And, you know, I'm trying to sell my house, or, you know, some of those, I saw how we don't get our, you know, standard resident caught up in, with this for stretching out a little bit, a couple of months too long or something, and then addressing the big major issues. But I do appreciate, you know, that talk on that plan, I think is important, because you're not going to do that.
If you read the purpose of this, it's not to stop people from, you know, repairing buildings. We want people to help fix buildings and rebuild and provide more spaces and homes, et cetera. The purpose is not that. Purpose is to, you know, really not leave abandoned, for the most part, commercial or homes, any property, just sitting abandoned and open, broken windows, even if they're boarded up, it's pretty easy to get in them. I have a family member that just had bought a new house, and it wasn't in the city limits, but just outside the city limits. This is about a year and a half ago. And some kids broke in because the house was empty, because they were rehabbing a little bit, and lit it on fire. And most of the house burned. So those are things that I hope to stop and, you know, make things a little bit safer and stop having blighted commercial or homes sitting vacant, extremely blighted buildings sitting vacant in our city. Inevitably, they become dangerous buildings.
Right. Because right now, people who own blighted commercial property just sit there and pay the taxes, and there's really not a lot that we've done to them or could do.
And we have seen crime increase around those buildings, within those buildings. You know, kids can get in them. They're not safe, so. I would like to add a little bit to registration as well. I would like to know if utilities are connected or disconnected properly. I think that is fair for, fair to know for, you know, fire, things like that. We should know if electricity is connected, not connected properly. And then the date the property became vacant, I think we should make sure we include that in the registration. And I would like to, required maintenance. I think making sure property, the utilities are properly disconnected or properly connected is important. I also want to talk about signs potentially in vacant buildings, for vacant buildings. I don't know if we need to add something like that. And if a sign outside of a vacant building is not, if that's structure, a big sign is dangerous, is there, is that, does that come under another code, or is that, would that be part of this, Greg?
What sort of sign?
Like a sign sitting outside, and I, like Dick Samaco down the road at one point had a sign up. And if that, the building was empty, vacant building, et cetera, but if that sign became unstable.
Oh, the actual, commercial sign.
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
On property.
Yeah, there is a requirement in the zoning ordinance to remove signs that no longer advertise.
Okay, that was, that was a concern. And I know it might sound crazy, but removing perishables, things like that, can go a long way to make sure rodents smell or not bothering neighbors.
I have a question about 10-415, again, the waiver of registration fees and the demonstration or just demonstrating satisfactory proof. Won't we know what's going on when we issue a building permit? Won't we know what the plan is?
Well, if we were to issue a building permit, that would be, you know, obviously evidence of, that would be satisfactory as to.
Most of the rehab would require a building permit, wouldn't it?
It would, if there.
If they pull one.
Rehab in process, but, you know, I, I mean, that's, yes, that would be, that would be substantial evidence of rehabilitation being a process. Although you would be surprised how many building permits we issue that just expire after a year because nothing happens.
Well, we see the same thing as site plans at the planning.
Right, a little more work probably goes into the building plans, even the site plan, but yeah.
Thank you.
Question about penalties. So are that's, is that the standard offense penalty?
Compared to the city. Compared to the city attorney on that one. I, I didn't change it.
Yes. We want it to be a civil infraction, not a misdemeanor.
I think it was referring to.
Price wise.
Uh, yes, that's, that's common, but um I think a lot of them are now one seventy five.
Are those, are those set by resolution as well or do those need to be set in the ordinance?
In the ordinance.
Can we review any other updated ordinance to make sure the fines, fees, penalties are the same, Greg? Or like the, in the penalty version of this, I guess.
Yeah, that's kind of a tall order probably in terms of all the ordinances, but
Yeah.
related ordinances, we can certainly check.
Okay.
Well, I'm all for figuring out a way to make sure, uh, I'm not looking at residential um so much as the properties, the commercial properties that are just left there and left there and left there year after year. And we, we need to figure out a way to make those people move on those properties. Either do something with them, sell them, tear them down. They gotta do something. So if we can get some teeth behind an ordinance for the commercial people, that would be great.
Vacant properties that are not, that are exempt from this article, when the owner spends a portion of the year and that's. I go, oh, it's under waiver registration. I, I do think that we um, need to set a time limit for a waiver, so um if or some sort of how we're going to review to make sure that it's, they're actively trying to sell or lease the property. A, a measure of what that looks like. Now, I'm just trying to sell it without, you know, no for sale sign or it seems a little ridiculous and so how do we measure that?
Thoughts or discussion? You, you've given me quite a few ideas, so I think it would behoove us to look at another draft here before we try to do anything else. Thanks, thanks for your work on this and I'm, I appreciate everyone's input. I think this is great that we move forward. That word of aggressive being, moving forward with this is it's very important. I think it's great. Yeah, anything else on that?
Thank you, Greg.
You're welcome. Uh, next section is for various updates. Um the first will be the bicentennial mayor, Commissioner Roberts, can do that?
Um, Commissioner Roberts and myself are on the bicentennial committee and um, we have met several times and we have looked at what they did in the sesquenntennial, what they did in the centennial. And um, we're, we're talking about dates that would work the best and you're never going to find the perfect date. But we have now decided and it was confirmed when we found out both the centennial and sesquenntennial were on the fourth of July weekend. So we are going to do it July third through July sixth. Um, we are just in the beginning stages and Commissioner Roberts can talk you through on the schedule and you know what that's kind of looking like. There is a lot of moving pieces, but we are working in tandem with several different groups and they are participating and it's very exciting um, where it is headed. Just to let you know, we always meet usually, but it won't happen this next time. The second Monday of the, of the month and usually at the library. This last time it had to be moved into city chambers, but their next meeting is not on a Monday and that I'm going to be talking about in a few minutes because it's um, our sister city's visit is happening during that time. So we will be doing it on the second Tuesday, September tenth, and it'll be at five thirty in the, in the back room here at the chambers before the planning commission meeting that evening. But September tenth at five thirty. So um, all are welcome. We need more hands. Commissioner Roberts has started putting those committee names together for those that have volunteered and there's definitely not enough to make this happen. So I will turn it over.
Uh, first I'll say if you are interested in being a part of the committee, email uh, the mayor or I and you will get put on the email list that uh, Michelle Dewey has graciously agreed to put together for us. So you'll get the updates. Um, so we are very lucky that we have a wonderful community and we have received um, great response from asking for partnering with different uh, organizations in the community. And I'm just going to name a few of those. Adrian College, Adrian Public Library, Lenaway Historical Museum, Daughters of the American Revolution, Lenaway Community Chorus, the Adrian City Band, the River Raisin Ragtime Review, Lead and First Fridays Committee, to name a few. Uh, we are also, I haven't gotten with the person in charge of the Fourth of July Parade, but I believe she's in the audience. There she is, yes. And so hoping to partner with Civitan. So well, as the schedule stands right now, just giving you big picture items. We will kick it off on Thursday, July third with the Adrian City Band and the Lenaway Community Chorus will be singing alongside the band. Um, hoping to have a um, ice cream social that night along with those uh, things going on. Uh, till Friday, July fourth, we will have the um, hopefully as long as Civitan allows, partner with Civitan for the parade. Um, opening the time capsule with the D A R and doing some walking tours, especially of um, downtown and Oakwood Cemetery, the hu- um, Historical Society, different significant places, architecture in town, maybe even do um the uh, promenade, like an open house of different significant homes in the area. Uh, we, then there are other things going on that day that we're still working on. Um, but First Fridays will be that night and we are going to partner with them. Um, and hopefully do a home, homecomers gathering. So anyone who has lived in the city of Adrian and would like to come back, kind of like a homecoming. Um, have a gathering that night in the evening and then have the fireworks that evening. On Saturday, uh, the fifth, again, the tours and open houses will continue. Um, I have reached out to the Walker Tavern Wheels, which is the vintage baseball club and they are interested in um, coming to town and playing a baseball game. Uh, just need to find a spot for them. Um, so possibly working with Adrian Public Schools, who I have not asked yet. So that's um, still in the works. Um, and then we are strongly partnering with the River Raisin Ragtime Review and will be shifting everything out to them and they have some amazing ideas for continuing celebration out on um, that campus. And then on Sunday, um, burying the time capsule in Comstock Park along with a community picnic, a community wide picnic. So that's broad. There's a lot of other things that could happen within all of those days. Um, but these are the, what I would con- consider the significant timeframes and significant things. Um, but hopefully working out a, a lot more that will happen on Friday and Saturday mainly. So most of the items will happen Friday during the day and Saturday during the day. Okay? Any questions from commissioners about all of that?
Well, one thing that did come up, and I know we've talked about um, Commissioner Roberts, and that's one reason why we also wanted to talk about it tonight was just the question that has been brought up by the, the community members that are involved with the bicentennial committee is is this a city event or is it a bicentennial committee event? You know, and, and what does that partnering look, you know, like, is there going to be financial resources? They, we do understand that in the past the um, celebrations have been, there's been fundraising and that has already been brought up and, and everybody is well aware of that and knows that it's not going to be fully funded by the city, but it, you know, what does this look like? What is this? Is this a city event? Is this just a bicentennial committee event and I guess we need feedback. We, we brought it up to, to Greg and he said we should talk about it here, so.
Having just led, left a uh, lead uh, sponsorship event planning uh, meeting. I would say that uh, first and foremost, if you are going to push for sponsorships, and that was our conversation, what do you get? You know, what's the, you know, you're a headliner. Um, your social media um, posts, is it going to be on a T-shirt? Is it on an event banner? You know, I, from the Diversity Event Fund, we wrote three checks this week and, you know, there is very specific language in all three of those um, events of how things are recognized. So that would be uh, an important piece.
I guess we're just looking for feedback. Can we call this a citywide or a city run event?
I, I had didn't, wasn't able to make it to the last two because, because of family emergencies, but I recall talking about it. I, what I thought we had come up with was that, you know, the city was going to be responsible for that weekend, if, the weekend events. If people wanted to do their own thing during that, that's great too. And, and then celebrating throughout the year. If organizations wanted to do something under the, the, the theme. Um, we would, you know, they can use the logo and things like that, but that was their event to plan and, and, and create. Does does that right, sound like how it?
That would get muddy with the Plain Wave Campus though, right? And the Saturday events. If it's sponsored by the city, but who's, you know, how's.
Well, part of that discussion was just that maybe it would be like the, the cities making sure their shuttles going back and forth. Um, and that's really their part of that event. Like we literally transitioned over to it being that's their part of that bicentennial event. Like they, they're exploring even um, you know, having a a piece written and that they're going to present there for the bicentennial. So it would really transition to that campus away from us.
So that would then be their event, not a city event.
Right. So we're partnering with them.
And same would be true with the Fourth of July Parade then. So it's Civitan still has to get the insurance and pay the fee.
Right. The, the same with First Fridays. First Fridays Committee is still doing their own thing for that night. We're not taking over First Fridays. We're going to use their information with their, with their agreement to be a part of the overall event.
And, and part of that is, is definitely helping us, you know, just in cost and in the amount of fundraising. Um,
Right.
A large part of fundraising to have fireworks, that, that's a major undertaking and we wouldn't even have to be worrying about that as as the bicentennial group because it would already be happening under First Fridays, you know, and, and Main Street, you know, doing that and already having that event downtown, closing off the streets. You know, then, then that takes it off of that bicentennial group. That's, that's kind of how it's viewed. Does that make sense?
I think if we're looking for sponsors, I think it's, goes without saying that the city is in line with the other sponsors. We are, we're trying to help facilitate this. It may get us into a gray area, but it's important for us to be stepping up and saying, we are going to try to do part and parcel, whatever we can do as a city to, to help.
Heard Commissioner Miller volunteer to write like a play. His present, that's again, I think he.
I have three, I have three all ready to go. Matter of fact, I, I want to say that uh, uh, my good friends uh, down in Raleigh experienced uh, during their um, celebration. They had a play that was written uh, for their uh, region, their area. And people have been asking me for years to get some of our playwrights to write a play about Lenaway County and do a play in the cemetery. Where people do a tour through the cemetery, it could be one part and piece of our, of our celebration, but it, it's a, it's a fun historic uh, piece. Uh, and I'd be happy to give you names to.
Got you. Get your typewriter out, bud.
I know a, another one little um, piece to this too, that's kind of exciting. We're hoping, we're keeping our fingers crossed, but there is um, contact right now with um Governor Crosswell's relative and with a, a relative of Addison Comstock and we're trying to get them to come back for the bicentennial and they're, they're open to it. They're, they're talking about it right now. So we're hopeful.
And Laura Havlin's descendants were here not too long ago, so those could be another connection.
Okay, so we're going to view this, the weekend, what happens from July third through July sixth as a city run event. But also like the Adrian City Band and Lenaway Community Chorus, what they do is their own thing. The Civitan Parade is their own thing. River Raisin is their own thing. Okay?
Right.
I got it? Okay.
Got it.
All right.
Thank you for doing that work. I, I'm, I'm excited. It'll be a really fun.
There's a lot more to be done.
I'll, I'll step on it, but I, that's, it's really exciting to see.
Yeah, but it's nice that we have so many people willing to partner who came out to the meetings and they're like, can we do this? Can we do that? And so we have a, we have a, we have, we have way more um, people interested in doing things than I think w- we have either time for or ability to do. There's so many ideas that would be wonderful to do, but at some point you have to pare it down.
Any more on the bicentennial? Okay, next up is the update on the community academy.
Yes, so uh, we had twenty-two applicants, um, twenty-one new, and we actually have one returning from last year who was not able to finish the academy. So that's great. So he's welcome back. So they're all um, welcome to the academy. And um, should have received an email from me on Saturday night, I believe it was. Uh, and with the schedule and at least half of them have replied saying that they are planning to attend and will be there. Um, so it's, it's very exciting. We have, that we have more applicants this year than last year. Um, and again, we start on September fourth and end on November sixth. Um, we've had great uh, partnerships with the county people that are all coming to do their little bits and with our department heads. Um, I think it's going to be another great academy. So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And the final update to mayor is on our Moriyama Sister City delegation visit.
So just to let everyone know, um, they will be arriving um, Friday, September sixth. And while some of them will be arriving late afternoon, some will be coming a little bit after that because um, the mayor of Moriyama needs to go to another spot before coming to Adrian. So there's two groups leaving Lansing um, in separate cars, but they will be arriving. We want to welcome them into our First Friday Celebration. Like we're going to let them walk around. We want to walk them around and you know, let everybody greet them that wants to greet them and just um, welcome them. Um, I know Michelle is working on putting things on the digital banners, welcoming, welcoming them. We will have, though I need, I wanted to let you all know, but there will be details coming. We're almost finalized on that, but there will be a dinner for the um, commission and their significant others and um, city, you know, city administration, but um, with those delegates, there are only four coming. Just to let you know, it is Mayor Morinaka, the um, public relations uh, person, he also translates a little bit, Haruki, he has come before. He's the only returning. Um, um, and the only one that we were with on our visit recently, other than Mayor, Mayor Morinaka. And there are two female delegates that are coming as well. Um, they did say that they are bringing a smaller group this time only because this is their regular year to visit. Next year is not, but they are insistent that they are coming full force next year for our bicentennial celebration. And so several that have pretty much come every time that they visited are waiting until that time around to make sure they can come next year. So there should be a larger delegation. That's why it's a little smaller this year. But they will start in Lansing with all of the Michigan delegation with the. But they will start in Lansing with all of the Michigan delegation with the Shega Perfection, and that is where they will be. And then we will get them Friday. We will have that dinner. So I will send out those details and then, um, you're, you're all welcome to attend. And then Saturday they are going to be attending a football game at Adrian College and a football game at Santa Heitz University. Mayor Morinaka is a big sports fanatic and so is, uh, and they really wanted to see an, an American sport and, and really experiencing that. And they're going to be in the president's boxes and, um, being fed there and just experiencing, uh, more of an American tradition. And then, um, Sunday they are going to be with their home stay families. Um, typically that's just a day where that home stay family can take them where they want to take them and, um, they just enjoy that time with them. And then Monday they will be going to Adrian Public Schools. I do not know which school yet, um, but there is going to be a visit there. They're also going to be visiting Lenaway Votech. I don't know which class yet. School will have already started, so that worked out well. And, um, we're hoping to, um, put something else in there, but there's been a few things that have come up recently. So we're, we're, we'll let you know on that. But the farewell dinner will be Monday, that September 9th, um, at 6:00 PM. Unfortunately, where we were going to have it, there was a massive change in personnel and I was advised, we need to find a new place. Found out over the weekend. So Michelle and I brainstormed today and we think we have a really great plan, but I don't want to announce it until I verify that it's going to work. But we think we have a, a great plan. We have a couple of backups if it doesn't work too, but, um, so that will also be, um, the commission invited to that along with significant others, city administration. And we'll, we'll do our farewell event with them. They're not actually leaving until, we need to leave with them around 12:30 to take them back to Lansing on Tuesday, the 10th. So Adrian College, their Hickman Art Gallery, they are going to see the new exhibitor by Carlos Tobar. And they're going to, um, meet that hopefully meet and think that meet the artist, but they are going to provide lunch for them there in the art gallery. And if, um, those that visited Japan, um, with us. Tradition and they said they could feed them in and they can eat right in the art gallery and get a tour and meet the artists. And then they will be heading out. It's a very short visit and not even for very long, but we're excited. Um, so there, and it's, it's a very, very, very big deal. But their mayor is coming. Um, in fact, um, I've talked to former mayor Jim Berryman many times. He just can't believe that their mayor is coming because it's something that is very unheard of for somebody that high up to be coming. But he promised us when we were there in Moriyama last year and he's holding true to his promise. And so, um, and he's very excited to come as well. So. So just if you're at first Friday, please, you know, make sure, come up, say hi, welcome them. And yes.
As a city, are we planning on, uh, sending gifts back with them? Of course.
Yes. And, um, I am, I can talk to you later, but with Commissioner Roberts had a great idea the other day at our meeting and I'm in works on that, but I don't want to spill that yet until I know it works.
That's great.
But, um, the local artist, um, the, um, the person in charge of the Hickman Art Gallery is, is, is procuring a piece from that local artist, a print to send back with them framed too as well. Obviously we'll have to ship it. They can't take it with them, but, um, we are getting a piece from that art. Um, to that art gallery presentation, they're actually going to, so that I know that'll be a little bit more meaningful. We know that's happening.
And, and the other question I'd have is, if we could find out if they are coming for our celebration next year. I think it'd be great if we had a time where, where they were included in the schedule somehow.
Yeah. And, and that is in the talks of bicentennial. We've already been talking about that. Yes.
Yeah. We have a time spot for them. We just don't know what we're doing with it.
We're not sure yet. Like we know that over by Friendship Alley, we want, we would like to do something over there. And there's a couple of different ideas and we just have to see logistics and see what could happen, but like, but, but make a time for them.
Microphone. They made us sing Country Road because the deputy mayor wears cowboy boots in Japan and maybe we could get disaster.
Or maybe a Lake Biwa. Yeah. I'm actually trying to get that music. I, I'm, I'm working with Haruki to get the music set to me so we can do the Lake.
And if not, I have a couple of songs. I'd love to have them try to sing like you made a thing. Be good.
Hey, thank you, mayor. Uh, our last scheduled work session item is the strategic plan check-in, which I think we missed last month. But, um, the thing I wanted to update you on, uh, from our strategic plan is our work on the, uh, new zoning ordinance. So the, one of our goals was to adopt a new leaner zoning ordinance. Is a one-year task for, uh, economic growth and vibrancy. We are now at the state and for those who don't know or don't recall, we got a, uh, a grant from redevelopment ready communities for 50% of the cost of that. Uh, and we retained, uh, Smith Group, who was one of the qualified, uh, contractors or consultants to do the work. And they've been working on it, uh, for just about a year now, uh, almost. And, uh, we are now at the stage where we have a full draft. The process is being overseen by a steering committee that consists of members of administration, planning commission, city commission, and the zoning board of appeals. And so our next, uh, steering committee meeting is coming up at the end of this month. I think it's 27th, Gordon. Is that what it is? You don't know. Yeah. Well, that's what I'd have to do too. I thought maybe you had a better memory than me, but it's, I believe it's 27th, but it's at the end of this month. Uh, they have seen, uh, one draft of it and, um, they're about to see, uh, another more complete, um, or revised draft of a complete ordinance. Uh, highlights of things, well, probably the highlight of that ordinance and one of the goals of the ordinance was to create, uh, additional opportunities for housing in the city. Uh, the ordinance says proposed would essentially allow at least two dwelling units on every residential parcel in the city. So allowing for accessory dwelling units, uh, uh, in addition to, uh, principal, uh, single family homes on, um, every parcel in the city, uh, which is a way we believe to very substantially increase the housing opportunities without all the costs associated with building a new residential structure. Uh, there are other strategies in there as well, but that's going to be the most, uh, stark change that you will see. Um, assuming that makes it all the way through the steering committee's efforts. Greg, that is the 29th.
29th, okay.
There, Thursday, uh, Thursday, the 29th.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, we're also trying to simplify approval processes with, you know, which is something we've struggled with in the past, things that, you know, had to go to the planning commissioner, the zoning board of appeals that had long lead times, that often thwarted, uh, people's aspirations as related to those kinds of, uh, especially temporary, um, use activities. Uh, and so we're trying to simplify those things to allow more things to be handled administratively and, you know, not have to wait for, uh, those monthly meetings. Um, adding, uh, an addition, a couple of additional zoning districts as well. A fringe downtown district, uh, was one of the, uh, things that the, uh, the consultants recommended in addition to our core downtown. Uh, uh, so it, it is coming along. I don't know if it will, well, it certainly won't be adopted by the, you know, expiration of your first year of your strategic plan, but it will be drafted and hopefully on its way toward adoption by about that time. And, uh, you know, we've got some substantial thinking to do about how we're going to adopt it because, uh, implied in this is essentially the rezoning of most parcels of land in the city to create these new zoning districts. And so we have to figure out a way to do that without making that so cumbersome as to be a, an extremely, uh, onerous process. But, uh, and we haven't gotten to that part of the discussion yet. We're still drafting, but I, this is getting very close. I know I've said that for a while, but it's getting really close now to as a tangible form. And, uh, probably after the next steering committee meeting, we'll begin, uh, thinking about when it can go to planning commission, uh, for the full planning commission's review. That is my update, but I'm happy to talk about anything else on the strategic plan that any of the commissioners would like to talk about.
As, as we move forward with, um, the Rhodes Millage, is there any, um, progress with, um, the communication aspect of the strategic plan? So that, uh, we can begin to communicate those efforts and other great things taking place.
Yeah. Michelle is working on a public information, uh, I don't want to use campaign, but, um, public information, uh, sharing strategy as it relates to, uh, the local, uh, Rhodes Millage, which, uh, if you did, didn't know, has been approved by the governor and is on the ballot, uh, uh, for, uh, the November general election. I have asked, uh, uh, her HR director to look into some of the other aspects of what was described in there as, uh, as a, uh, it was described as a communications and marketing position. We kind of have that position. Uh, but looking at some of those bullet points that were under there and, uh, contemplating what, uh, uh, an administrative position might be that would, uh, that would address some of those other things. Um, so that, that's what we're up to.
Timeline on that from HR, you think?
I hope you have any idea when we'll be ready with the information piece, Michelle.
Heard the street millage?
Yeah.
I mean, I'll have the final draft probably in the next two days. Matt's out of the office, but he said he would be able to review it while he's out too. So.
Okay. Um, I don't know yet from HR when she's going to have the other, uh, job description done.
With the, uh, additional housing opportunities in, uh, single family, um, parcels, is that like, um, allowing the version of tiny homes in backyards? Or what, what is our current and what would you perceive is the future's, um, requirement for square footage for a home?
It varies right now depending on what single family district you're in. There's four of them and they each have lot, depending on how large the lot size is, they each have a larger minimum, uh, square footage, anywhere from about, don't quote me on the exact numbers, but 600 to maybe 1,200 square feet. It's going to be smaller than that probably. And, uh, the lot sizes, the consultant's still working through, but there will not be different sizes of residential lots other than multifamily, you know? So there'll be a basic zoning district of R1, which allows up to two dwelling units. And, uh, to say, I don't think they've proposed, uh, minimum lot size for that district yet, but uh, it's going to include the opportunity for, you know, a, a dwelling unit that would be smaller than is currently allowed. You know, whether or not that has to be, well, I, I mean, it remains to be seen exactly how that'll work, uh, with principal dwelling units. Uh, a lot of things come into play as it relates to that here, because your property is already going to have, most properties are already improved. And so they're going to have a lot of the lot coverage that's allowed already taken up. Uh, and so that will dictate where another dwelling could be and how big it could be. Likewise, the setbacks will dictate that. Yeah, but to, to answer the question about how small, I, yeah, I would think, you know, that those accessory type dwelling units would be in the 450 square foot to 550 square foot range, probably.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Which I think is definition of a tiny home, 464, I think. Don't quote me on that one, but I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, that, I mean, usually see them around 450 or so, yeah.
Greg? Correct me if I'm wrong. Were we supposed to meet with the gentleman that, is it Lou?
Lou Bender?
Yeah.
He didn't prescribe that.
Okay.
Uh, so at the very end of your strategic plan is what was supposed to happen after a year. And so what it says is 12 to 13 months after formal adoption. I think you adopted this in September. Uh, the commission and staff will review and revise the plan to identify the one-year tasks for 24, 25. So that's, that'll be the next thing. And probably your next meeting is when you should talk about what that process is going to look like.
Do we have a time for that meeting on the 29th? But do we know when?
The steering committee? Well, you're, you're not coming to it, but
Good.
We have time.
Thank you.
Uh, that's all I had, mayor. And if any of the commissioners have other items for work session, that would be the time.
At the last session, we talked about the translation and looking into things.
Yeah, we're, we're going to put out a survey and we just didn't have time to get it done before tonight. But, uh, Michelle's drafted a survey that we'll put up on our, on Survey Monkey, which is our platform. And, uh, try to get people, get some feedback from people as to how they've used it and how useful it's been for them for your use. And further discussing that, uh, and, uh, the available options.
So that can be in English and Spanish?
That would be the plan, yes. Anything else? Not mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
All right. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Aye.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion approved.
May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda or to adopt it? Sorry.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banky?
Aye.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to our regular agenda, resolution R24 dash 038 is from the fire department. It is a resolution to approve a fireworks permit for Santa Heitz University. May I get a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Sorry about that. Are there any commissioner comments or, well, any, any discussion on this?
I, I just think it would be nice that the public understands why we have to do this. The state of Michigan has certain dates that fireworks are allowed. And if any organization wants to have fireworks outside of those specific dates, they have to be approved by the community. So that's why we have to do this.
I, I think it also applies to any commercial fireworks display, if I'm not mistaken.
If they don't fall within one of those, whatever, 10 different days throughout the year, whatever they are.
We have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz with a second from Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So mayor, for this next, uh, item, uh, R24 039, I put a revised resolution. I places, uh, on the table on the dais tonight, uh, as I explained over the weekend, uh, when the contractor visited the site, they found the need to put up a, a barrier wall to prevent the structure being demolished from falling on the, uh, home next door, which is literally only five to six feet away from a collapsing wall of the structure. And so they, uh, posed the addendum, uh, as a cost of doing that. You know, e, e, even with that. Yeah, e- e- even with that. Addendum, this is still a pretty fair price for demolishing a three-story. Commercial building, so we appreciate the contractor working with us on it and being able to get on the job. Quickly because we do view this as an emergency situation, so please refer to the. Addendum, the revised resolution that's at your place on the table for forty-four. Thousand eighty-four dollars, and then the addendum to the proposal that was in your packet is also there at your place on the table.
So for resolution R twenty-four dash zero thirty-nine, it is from community development. It is a resolution to waive the bid process and approve the purchase of demolition services for one twenty-four South Tecumseh Street. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. He's giving away seconds over here, sorry about that. Um, are there any commissioner comments or discussion on that?
Just the discussion I have is the balance of uh, uh, the bid process. And obviously, when we waive the bid process, we're potentially foregoing. Uh, costs that are associated with that, and while there is a bid process that could be waived. Um, and in this case, um, is suggested to be waived. Uh, that doesn't mean that we couldn't have continued to move forward with a quote process. Uh, so for example, um, last month, we awarded a bid to. Um, the lowest bidder for a demolition and that lowest bidder wasn't contacted. As part of this process. Um, I understand that the company that we're going with is a trusted uh. Uh, organization that works in the community and I don't have any question about their ability, but. Um, this was known to us on August eighth during the construction board of appeals component. And while we made one phone call to the one vendor that we went with, we could have made. Two phone calls or three phone calls and we could have reported and said. Yep, we only have one person that turned a bid in. Um, we also could have said to help build the public trust and ensure that the. Public dollar is being spent appropriately, that we got two responses and. This is the one that we're going to go with, and the reason we're going to go with this one is because there's. Um, better ability to handle complex projects or something like that, so. I um, would, I understand that this is listed as an emergency. But I'm also concerned because if we're saying it's emergent, I would say it's high priority, not emergency. Because when I was by the property this morning, the sidewalk's not closed. So you can literally walk in front of this building and touch the wall that's bowing out. Um, and that's also a concern that we're coming forth and we're using this emergency. Um, focus to get wave a bid, but we're not protecting our residents by closing a sidewalk.
Sidewalk was previously closed, so if that's been removed, that was. Without my knowledge, the sidewalk should be closed.
Yeah, that the sidewalk was open um. When I emailed you um, last week, um, Tuesday following my community conversation and then through this week.
We do allow for. I mean, if if the wall is bowing out, um, there is some urgency. And we do need to get that sidewalk closed off, but if there is urgency, we do have the ability to waive. The bidding process to get things done and accomplish quickly if there is um. Danger involved to keep the community safe.
So Greg. Can we get, first, can we get? The sidewalk closed off? And then how quickly do we anticipate the building coming, being demolished? Demolished?
I believe the day they committed to is this Thursday.
This Thursday?
Yes.
That's pretty quick. Yep. Thank you.
And I just sent a text about the sidewalk.
So hearing no more discussion. We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
No.
And Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion carried, uh, one no vote and six yes votes.
Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those?
Uh, just comment, kudos to um, the city attorney for the report that's included there. Hits all the, all the right spots.
So moving on to our public comment. Um, this is general public comment, just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit. You will see it on the screen. And for the record, please state your name and place of residence. We will begin inside the city chambers first. And after we have exhausted all public comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants.
Good evening. My name is Dorothy Schmidt and I live at four twenty-eight M Street. On the corner of Butler and Elm. Uh, I, uh, we. We were going through a process of. Cutting down infected trees. That had uh, what's called. Uh, bark beetles. Um, and what they are is a collection of insects. That get in between. The bark of the tree. And the hole of the tree. Normally, um. Insects will go for the center of the tree. Not bark beetles, they eat the bark. And and the, the collection of insects might be mosquitoes. Flies. Nats. And there's a flying insect that is black about a. Quarter of an inch big. That gets in there. And so they all do, they all eat this bark. And the tree turns gray and has lumps on the outside. And uh, it's infected when it goes. Into the sewers and passes along the sewer paths. So we, uh, my next door neighbor who is a tree cutter. Who um, found somebody who would. Give and lend him equipment. To go sixty foot up in the air. To uh, get to the point where he could cut these trees. Because the overgrowth is sixty foot, maybe seventy foot high. That's the east side. But because he did, uh, he had to use both of our. Lots in order to get this equipment up. Which um, damaged a fence on my side. And um. And some of the foliage and some, some of the planting and whatever. All this is along Elm Street. And what was planted into it. Is hanging vines that hang from two stories high. So I look and I say, are you, are you selling?
Your time is up, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
So when you're talking about taking things down. We're working on uh, unhealing it. Unhealing it. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I live on the east side. I'm a resident for thirty-two years. And I'm very upset with the hot pink.
What is your name? Sorry.
My name is Ingrid.
Thank you.
Is that good enough?
Can we have your last name too?
Do you need it?
Yes.
Okay, Ingrid Weber.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't like the clutter, I don't like the mess. And my neighbor, Mr. Commissioner Administrator, I called your office. Four years ago, they dug out some, or they put in new curbs, they did not fill the hole. I walk my dog in that area every day, there's a fire hydrant. And you have to go onto the curb to fall in the hole, and I'm asking you sir if that can get done soon. And also with the hot pink for sale or the garage sale signs. The people leave their address to the um. Uh, garage sale, I'm sorry, I had a stroke, so I'm slow, and um. I've, I've called for people to look at that sign. They're all over, there's one by the post office, they're hot pink. The address to the garage sale is at thirty-one thirty-five Benno. The city person that I spoke to, they, they may be outside of the city, but they're cluttering our inside of the city. And there's an ordinance against that, they're not used to, allowed to use um, telephone poles, utility poles. Can we please clean up the little ghetto that we live in? You also live in that little ghetto. That's what I look at in my community, I got my first apartment across the street when I was nineteen years old. I can call this a ghetto, I've watched Lenawee County or Adron, the city, I've been in it thirty-two years. I've watched the city go downhill and it can't be denied. Thank you for listening.
Uh, Jerk Tim, Adron resident. March twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen, a pedestrian was walking across Winter Street at Mommy in the crosswalk with a pedestrian signal. A driver made a left turn onto Winter Street and struck the pedestrian. The driver asked if the pedestrian was okay, then fled the scene. This intersection has had three reported pedestrian crashes since twenty fifteen, nothing has been done to improve the safety of this intersection. July twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, a bicyclist was traveling westbound on West Mommy Street. A driver overtook the bicyclist, then turned right in front of the cyclist to enter Huntington Bank, causing a collision. City leadership responded by doing nothing, but are now trying to make these types of collisions more common by putting in a substandard bi-directional bike lane. That does not meet GAT and NACTO guidelines in that area. July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. A bicyclist was riding on Division Street and was rear-ended by a driver that claimed they did not see them, even though it was confirmed that the bicyclist was utilizing rear reflectors. The city responded by removing the bike lanes and widening traffic lanes a couple of months later. March twelfth, twenty nineteen, a driver was traveling northbound on Springbrook Avenue. A Springbrook student exited a vehicle parked on the curb, ran across the street and was struck by the driver. The city responded by putting in flashing fifteen mile per hour signs. These signs do nothing to calm traffic speeds as the design speed of the street is far higher than the posted speed limit. When the street was recently completely rebuilt, the city chose to keep the street design as it was. And implemented no traffic calming or pedestrian or bicycle safety measures. Failing the students and every, or failing that student and every other student that attends Springbrook. They recently repainted the street with all the flaws it had last year. August twenty-first, twenty eighteen, I was crossing East Church Street in a crosswalk with a cross signal. I was struck by a driver turning left off of South Main Street, the driver attempted to flee. I came to the commission at the time with, with short and long-term solutions. That would make this intersection safer for pedestrians such as leading pedestrian intervals and curb extensions. The six-year anniversary of this incident is actually this Wednesday. And not one of the things I suggested have been implemented at any intersection in this city. August ninth, twenty twenty-four. A fourteen-year-old was riding his bike and was struck by a driver that ran a stop sign. On Chestnut, the driver fled. These are just a handful of pedestrian and bike-related car crashes out of the one hundred and fifty-seven that have occurred between twenty fourteen and twenty twenty-three. As I've pointed out before, our city is regu-, our city regularly doubles the average pedestrian death rates in our state. This is not inevitable, this is not an accident, this is the result of policy choices. Will this commission do what past commissions have done and ignore avoidable crashes endemic to our streets? Or will you finally take action to implement the complete streets policies? That various commissions have been promising since the twenty-tens? Thank you.
Evening, James Troll, live over on Mommy Street. About a month ago, four out of seven of you passed an ordinance. We call it a POS, point of sale. One gentleman. Don't mean to call you out, but you are a renter, you should have excluded yourself from that vote. Because in that ordinance, it excludes rental properties. I sat for twenty minutes one night. I found thirty-five, I know what expired means and I know what certified means. Well, one of you tell me what. Hold means. Five eleven or not five eleven, five nineteen, East Mommy Street is a rental property. Its certificate expired in two thousand twenty-two. But it has a hold till two thousand twenty-five. You excluded rental properties because according to you. That they were inspected. Go down there right now, porch is falling off the house. Sidewalk's replaced, I replaced it this weekend for. You have a group of people that some of them might be here, some might not, that are working to get that ordinance repealed. Why don't you guys just drop it? You excluded somebody, you excluded the major problem. You said chain and cable earlier. A decade, it's been sitting there for a decade. Falling apart. Right around the corner here, the old farm, it's sitting there. Nothing's been in there. Why has nothing been done? Have a good evening.
At this time, we will now open up public comment to those on Zoom. Hearing no public comment, are there any commissioner comments?
Just um, uh, from earlier conversation related to um, the upcoming pending work on Tecumseh Street. Can uh, we also make sure that the occupant of the house next door knows? The timeline for demolition and then also that, that building may contain asbestos. So they might want to keep their windows shut and there's any prevention strategies that could be shared with them.
Uh, yeah, certainly we'll let them know. Part of the process of demolishing a building where you can't separately abate asbestos, if there is any. We don't know that there is any, but. Is to, the concern with asbestos is friable asbestos, and so the process is that you keep it wet during the demolition process. And then you use covered trucks to remove it. By keeping it wet, the asbestos can't become friable and. Airborne, which is the problem.
All right, just a reminder that school starts for Adron Public Schools next week, so please drive with more caution. You're going to have a lot of children walking to school in the city of Adron starting next week. May I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned, thank.